Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019 at 7:02 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
(Inaudible). Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnen.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Viglion.
Here.
Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Tonight we have a special presentation of a service award to Bob Grimm. This is to Robert Grimm in appreciation for your 30 years of dedicated service to the town of North Branford. Bob, you want to come up?
I've known Bob for a long time. He's been with us 30 years. Bob's always been an asset, has kept everybody street clout, and along with all the other activities he's done over the years. It's a pleasure to be with him, my pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. You did a great job following our streak.
Thank you. Good luck. Congrats, Bob, on the best.
All right, here we go. Ready on three, one, two. Again, ready, one, two. One more time. Okay.
Sure, you keep moving over. Smile, you just keep moving over.
Okay, moving on. Motion to approve the amendments of the previous meeting, February 19th, 2019, Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglion.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
We'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondent citizen's statements underwater pollution control. Unfinished business underwater pollution control. There's nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen's statements and petitions underwater pollution control, nothing. Move into the Regular Town Council Meeting. Reports of boards, committees, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
Economic development met last night. There is, in our packet, the synopsis from Roger Solway for the last month, his economic review, that I'm not going to go through. Everyone can kind of look at that.
I didn't get Roger's report.
Oh, it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the packet?
No.
Oh. Sorry, I thought it was.
I thought I saw it somewhere.
Okay, we'll get that. If it's not in there, we'll get a copy to you, to everyone for that. They also talked about, there's been two different parties that have been interested in 1599. So they're just in an info gathering site, information, at this point in time, but there is some interest in that parcel. So we'll see once where that goes. They're, they've submitted their budget. The biggest increases in their budget are going to be for salaries. One is increasing for the clerk for EDC, and the other is increasing Rogers' hours from 19 to 25, and everything that goes along with that. They're moving ahead with their Sunflower program. The latest issue of the Totucket Times had the article as to what they're promoting for businesses and residents. They have a committee of almost 20 people that are going to be helping with that program. And they are also doing a video with Totucket TV that they will post on their website and use for marketing, which is also part of this program. And the Sunflower program is part of the destination North Branford promotion that they're doing. They have applied for some various grants for some programs, and they're just waiting to hear from that. But they are, things are moving along with the EDC.
Thank you. Park and Rec, creation?
Park and Rec met last week. Their meeting last week was in regards to their budget. Their regular meeting was canceled, so it was just their budget meeting, and what will be in our book, our budget book, that they approved. That was it.
Police Commission?
Police Commission, our next meeting is Monday, March 11th. But I also have a letter that I'd like to read to everyone. I think it's some exciting news, and it's a national lip sync challenge. Huma Entertainment produces for the popular Super Bowl's greatest commercials on CBS. For the past 18 years, is producing a one-hour television special to air on CBS Network tentatively entitled First Responders Lip Sync Challenge. The special showcases the fun side of our heroes from first responder teams around the country and their lip sync videos that have gone viral on social media. Some lucky teams behind the best videos selected by our producers may be eligible for cash prize donations to their first responder organization and possibly be invited to Los Angeles for a live studio shoot with our celebrity host. We would be delighted to consider your organization's lip sync video for our show. So our interim chief, Lovelace, has received this letter, and he has sent in the necessary paperwork, so we hope that, that our, our lip sync video becomes something on national TV. I think it's great, and they should be congratulated that it be considered, because I guess there are tons throughout the country.
To get that, yeah, to get that letter, we were already weaned down on the list, correct?
Right. So I think it's really exciting.
Fire Commission?
There was no meeting. The next meeting, Commissioner's meeting, is, is Thursday.
Thank you. Board of Education and Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
They had no meeting.
East Shore Health District Department?
Mayor, we do have the director here tonight would like to say a few words. Mike Pascasella is here and would like to talk about, come on, Mike, come on. I, I put together a, a letter and sent out a link, and, and Mike had called and asked if he could come, and I thought this would be most appropriate pot to let him speak to that issue.
Thank, thank you, Mike. I wanted to come to the Town Council just to acknowledge a recent article that was in a paper. Actually, it was yesterday. It was on the front cover of the New Haven Register, and it talked about the local health department not doing inspections. And so I wrote my first letter to the editor, and you should have a copy of it, which will be posted in the New Haven Register either tomorrow or the following day. So I'm not going to go over everything in the letter, and if you haven't had a chance to read it, please read it. But I just want to summarize how we got here and where we're going. So the state of Connecticut decided to go with the FDA code. It's a, it's a national code. In fact, I brought it with me. It's two books, over 700 pages, from a very thin code of about 20 pages. That was supposed to, we got memos in 2017 that on July 1, 2018, it was going to be implemented. So we were getting lots of calls from restaurants, and our inspectors were hearing that restaurants were concerned. And the guidance we got from the state was to give a, a couple-page outline of the code and put it on them, that it's their obligation to meet the new 700-plus page code, and that we, as a local health department, are going to enforce it. And that didn't really sit well with me, for a few reasons. One, my background is I worked in food service. I have family in food service. And it's not business-friendly, and that's not the approach that we do at the local health department. So we decided to put some trainings together, and we put some trainings, we actually did a roadshow around the health district, including North Branford, and we started working with our restaurants. We did focus groups. We, we met with them. We gave them the tools to implement the FDA code so they could be successful. And actually, I, I was in this room about three, four years ago when this council gave us marching orders along with other town officials that we need to be business-friendly. And, and here's where we divide, or we're different from the state. It's easy for the state to make the law, but they don't have to work with our communities. And in the end, I think our first obligation is to help them. So what we did is, being that this code was going to expire, we utilized our resources and got our new database. We had the trainings, focus groups. We did a customer service survey across the health district. And we listened to them and put together some information. We also wanted to make the process easier, so now we have online forums, and we take credit cards. So we really looked at this as an opportunity. So when they talk about inspections not being done in accordance with the state code, there's some truth to that, because we decided, why are we going to continue to use this outdated code? That we have a 700-page code coming, and if we didn't prepare our resident, or our businesses, we're just going to be, not proactive, but we're going to be reactive, because they're going to fail our, fail the inspections. So that's a decision we made, I made, and along with some of my partners around the state. The other thing that they brought up is staffing, and then, and here's where I want to clarify that. We don't have two folks in environmental health. We have three people in environmental health. We also have the health education, and we have support staff, so, you know, that, that team is much bigger. And like any organization, we do have a few folks that are out on statutory leave at FMLA, and for the last year, I've been trying to get an extra part-time position, but unfortunately, through contractual agreements with the, this union, they have, they have not agreed to it yet. Although we are doing, we are going through union negotiations right now, and we're trying to get that provision within the contract. But I felt obligated that I wanted to come to explain to you. I mean, and I'm sure you probably have some questions for me, and I welcome them. But it, you know, it really reflected poorly on the health district, and we work really hard for our reputation. And if you read the outline, it will give you a full understanding of the decisions we made. And the state may not agree with it 100%, but they don't work with our community. And to give local businesses this and say, here you go, we're going to start enforcing this, without trying to help them get through the process, I don't think it's good business practice, especially in today's economy. So with that, I, I'll open up to questions.
I have questions. Mike? Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you going to reach out to the businesses and educate them on all these changes?
Oh, so we've, we've been having, we put together a, a presentation. It was a two-hour presentation, and we went around the health district. We had them at our office. We had them here in North Branford, in East Haven, and, and it was a way for us, for them to come to us, or we go to them. And we actually, when we surveyed, we asked them where they would like to have these, some of these trainings. And so we've been actively doing these, these trainings with the restaurants. Again, with, along with focus groups, because they have a lot of questions. Sure. And so we're answering their questions, too.
So when do you estimate that you'll be back to full staff, or that you'll be back on schedule for inspections?
So the staff is doing, I mean, we always have been doing the inspections, but when it expired, we stopped doing some inspections, so that, so tactically, under the old code, we fell a little behind. That said, the new code, FDA code, it was supposed to take place on July 2018. Then it was postponed to this past January, and now it is postponed until later on this year, so we, we don't know. But what we're doing now is we're doing our regular inspections, but we're using it as an opportunity, spending a little more time to say, all right, so this is what the new code is, but here is what we're going to be looking for with the, the new code versus the old code. And it's, it's pretty significant, because the, the old code is literally 20 pages. And for someone to go to this, it's pretty comprehensive. Temperatures have changed. They need to have a whole bunch of education. And quite honestly, when the time comes when this does take place, restaurants aren't going to be ready, and we know that. And so we're trying to come up with some kind of phase-in period. We're actually talking to the state that, you know, maybe we need to put down our clipboards and not do enforcement, and do more education, because we don't want them to fail.
What is the reason for the postponements of the new code?
State resources, is my understanding. So the, at the local level, we were told we needed to be ready by July 1, 2018, and that's what we did. We're ready. We're ready to go. But we can't move forward with the new code, because there's some work that they need to do on their end. And until they do their part, we can't do our part. For instance, the inspection form is changing, and they have to determine that for us and all local health departments. So we're really, you know, sitting back, waiting for them to, to move forward with their part. But my understanding, it's been, it's been state resources. They haven't had the staffing, I guess, to complete the implementation, to properly roll it out, and they, the state, as in the state, is working with the FDA, the feds.
Well, you have a staffing problem as well. If, if you get the part-time position, will you consider yourself fully staffed and able to fulfill those obligations?
I, I believe we would. So with, for the old code to the new code, the classifications of all the restaurants have changed. So from a routine inspection, there's about 300 less inspections a year. So it's a risk base, so there's not as many inspections.
What's the, what's the frequency, or what are you required to inspect annually?
It, it depends on the classification of the restaurants. So under the old code, there were about 1,300 routine inspections. Under the new code, there's a little less than 1,000 inspections.
Are inspect, but is each restaurant to be inspected, or is it, is it a random based on a risk assessment of some sort?
Oh, it's a, it's a great question. It's a risk assessment. So a class-one restaurant would be, or a food service establishment, like a gas station selling coffee. A class-four would be a full-service, maybe nursing facility, or a very large restaurant with a catering component, and everything in between would be a class-two or three. So most of the class-fours went to threes, and a lot of threes went to twos, because again, it, it looked at it from a, a risk-based standpoint. So the more cooking and preparation, the higher the classification, the more inspections.
But is it, is it random, unannounced?
It's random, unannounced, and so class-one gets inspected once a year, class-two twice a year, three, three times a year, and class-four, four times a year, and it's random. The routine inspections are always random. They don't know when we're coming. They only know if they, they don't pass an inspection, we do a reinspection, then we, we set it up two weeks after the initial inspection.
And if you have a restaurant that passes, whatever you consider passing, passes, do they, are they, is there like a hit list, like for people that, or restaurants that continue to fail, that they're looked at a little bit more frequently?
Yeah, so, so what we do is we prioritize the restaurants, and that's what we did during this time. So if a restaurant is doing a very good job, we would inspect them with the regular frequency. And if they're not doing such a good job, we may go to them a, a little bit more and just see what's going on. In some cases, we put restaurants that aren't really doing so well and need a little extra help on a corrective action plan. We actually just did that last week with a restaurant that just really wasn't where they should be, and they needed some help. So we put them on an increased inspection schedule.
So you're inspecting them on the behalf of the FDA?
So the state adopts the FDA code, and then the state delegates the authority for inspection to the locals. The state actually does no inspections. All the inspections are done by the locals.
But the, there is an FDA that does inspections.
Oh, correct, yeah.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, there is an FDA.
So you're doing FDA inspections on behalf of the FDA, in some way?
So the FDA only looks at federal facilities or facilities across different state lines. For instance, for, but with our restaurants, because they're in our communities and in our state, that jurisdiction is passed on to the locals. The state role is to standardize our inspectors, so there's a standardization component. And then the fed, the FDA folks standardize the states. But all the inspections are done by us. And as you also mentioned, this is an unfunded mandate. While it's welcome, and I think it's good, because Connecticut is one of the few states that hasn't had this code, and our old code was from 1960. So this is a good thing, but it is a, another unfunded mandate, and it comes at the heels this year of a 20% cut to local health departments. And it's just a little concerning, because, you know, the state has these expectations of, of our towns, and they keep cutting us. And in this case, they're, they're not, they're not helping with this rollout on the local level. It's all up to us, and this is a course of action we decided to take.
And the reason why I'm asking some of these questions is because I work for a company. We do have, we, we receive FDA inspections, and I just wonder how small restaurants or food service facilities would, would handle an FDA rest, or FDA audit, per se. And that, and they're pretty intense, so.
And, and that's exactly why we did what we did, because the same code that you have to is in here. It's actually the same code, for the most part, just a few changes. And for the average restaurant, without proper preparation, there is no way they could meet this. It is impossible. There are things that need to be done, and it needs to be phased in over time. And to tell a restaurant that, here's your 700-plus page code, good luck, we're going to be here next week when it takes place, and if you don't pass, you're going to, you know, you're going to fail. And that's just, that's just not how we do things. It's inappropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, I know that they hit you pretty hard in the article, but to get up and running again as normal, you need the part-time help?
So.
And what else to correct the?
So, so it's a great question. What we're doing right now is, there are some other inspections, and we're utilizing our other staff to help out. So from, from a workload, the inspectors go out and they enter their inspections into the database, and there's some things that they do administratively. Administrative staff is helping them out, so they can go out and they can catch up, because in fact, I talked to the state today about, about the situation, and I assured them that, you know, now that we have clarity that the new code, we don't know when it's coming, here's our plan. In addition, I am meeting with our council tomorrow and the union to talk about a, a part-time position. And I would acknowledge that we like to get a part-time position, but if you, you know, if you worked with unions, you know that sometimes it's negotiated. You, I just can't hire a part-timer. If I can, I would have done that a year ago. And so I'm trying to, trying to negotiate that out. So short answer is, we reallocate our sources. We're going to get a part-timer in the meantime. Food is a priority.
And just, just for clarity, how, how much time is the state going to give us, you, in terms of an advance notice for when this will take effect? Six months?
They, today, they told me that it could happen as soon as July 1, or as late as January 1 of this year. That was the answer I received. So July, July 1 of 2019, or January 1, I'm sorry, January 1, 2020. So, but we're ready to roll it out when the time comes. We're just waiting for, for them. But the other thing that has to happen on their part is they need to standardize our inspectors. So while we have done our trainings and have our requirements from the FDAs, or some classes you have to take, there's about 50 hours of classes that the inspectors had to take, we're ready to, to move forward. But the state now has to standardize every single food inspector in the state, and they haven't even started yet. So my, my guess would be it wouldn't be until the end of the year. I don't, I don't see it happening before that.
And do you think that, at this point in time, all the training that you need to accomplish has been accomplished?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, all the training that we need to do, we, we did. In fact, we, we were proactive. We, we wrote a small grant and received it, and we sent two of our inspectors to a week-long training in Maine for the FDA code.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next is North Branford Police.
I just want to let you know that all the quotes that he was just talking about also refer to the senior center as well. All this all just happened to be implemented up in our building, and it was never treating our staff as well.
Next is North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee?
We had our first meeting last evening. I, I would say it was a very successful meeting, a very productive meeting. Silver Petroschelli Architects presented us two site plans for a town center. They were very exciting to look at. I think, unless someone wants to correct me, that all the members of the committee particularly liked one plan. They made a lot of suggestions for some changes within that plan. Next meeting in April, I think that they're going to come back with some of our changes. And in the meantime, members of the committee are also going to go out and visit some police facilities to, to see what other towns are doing.
And could I add also to that? The committee had talked about a meeting for April 3, but that is going to conflict with our schedule for budget deliberations, so I'll have to send out a.
Monday the 1st.
Monday the 1st, yeah, was the backup. So I'll have Jessica send out a confirmation for April 1st.
Thank you. Next is Finance Subcommittee.
We're just waiting for Fire Commission to meet on Thursday to give us the names of the committee members, and then we'll select some dates.
Thank you. All right, move in. 7:30, we'll move into the public hearing regarding Rose Ordinance 2018-3 entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
So the following notice was published in the Sound on February 28. The North, it's a notice of the public hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 5, 2019 at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number 2018-3, which amends Chapter 201 of the Code of the Town of North Branford.
classes that the inspectors had to take. We're ready to, to move forward, but the state now has to standardize every single food inspector in the state. Um, and they haven't even started yet. So my, my guess would be it wouldn't be until the end of the year. I don't, I don't see it happening before that.
And do you think that, uh, at this point in time, all the training that you need to accomplish has been accomplished?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, all the training that we need to do, we, we did. In fact, we, uh, we were proactive. We, we, we wrote a small grant and, uh, received it and we sent two of our inspectors to a week-long training in Maine for the FDA code.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, North Branford Police.
I just want to let you know that all the quotes that he was just talking about also refer to the senior center as well. All this all just happened to be implemented up in our building and was there treating our staff as well.
Next is North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
Uh, we had our first meeting, uh, last evening. I, I would say it was a very successful meeting, a very productive meeting. Uh, Silver Petroschelli Architects presented us two site plans for a town center. They were very exciting to look at. I think, unless someone wants to correct me, that all the members of the committee particularly liked one plan. They made a lot of suggestions for some changes within that plan. Um, next meeting in April, I think that they're going to come back with some of our changes. And in the meantime, members of the committee are also going to go out and visit some police facilities to, to see what other towns are doing.
And could I add also to that? Um, the committee had talked about a meeting for April third, but that is going to conflict with our schedule for budget deliberations. So I'll have to send out a.
Monday the first.
Monday the first. Yeah, it was the backup. So I'll have Jessica send out a confirmation for April first.
Thank you. Next is Finance Subcommittee.
Um, we're just waiting for Fire Commission to meet on Thursday to give us the names of the committee members and then we'll select some dates.
All right, moving, seven thirty, we'll move into the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance twenty eighteen dash three entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
So the following notice was published in the sound on February twenty eighth. The North, it's a notice of the public hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand nineteen at seven thirty PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash three, which amends chapter two oh one of the code of the town of North Branford entitled Streets and Sidewalks as summarized below. The provoked, proposed revisions to the street and sidewalk ordinance are to remove the detailed street specification from the ordinance and create a separate road standards document. Add new language to cover street excavations, rename snow and ice section as sidewalk section, adding new language to include the removal of snow from sidewalks, prohibited acts and repair sections, and revisions including new language to the section regarding work within a right-of-way as requested by the police commission and drafted by the town attorney. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk at Water Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, the twentieth of February two thousand nineteen, Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk.
Good evening, Kurt Weiss. Just a few comments on the proposed ordinance revisions. It's the same, uh, we've been discussing this for several months now at this point. Um, going over the changes primarily, uh, most of the discussion is centered on sidewalks. But, um, just to sort of go over it again and, and highlight it, um, the proposed revisions, one of the big items it does, it moves the detailed, um, road materials and methods of construction and puts it in a separate road standards document, which would have to be acted on separately by the town council if there, if the town council has approved this ordinance. Uh, so all those detailed, um, specifications are pulled out and begin in that separate document that can more readily be amended from time to time as, as necessary to reflect current, current standards. Um, the other thing too is we add new language to cover street excavations. They're more detailed in the proposed road ordinance. Um, we renamed the snow and ice section as the sidewalk sections. Um, this is a section we discussed quite a bit about, um, responsibilities for the maintenance of the sidewalks and repairs of sidewalks and snow and ice removal. Um, and we've added new sections regarding work within the right-of-way as requested by the police department and drafted by the town attorney. Um, basically covering when you need an officer. Um, it adds a provision too that not just, um, in street excavations, but when, uh, utility crews are doing work on overhead utilities, uh, there may be a need for a, an officer in the roadway for safety, uh, measures as determined, uh, if necessary by the, uh, police chief. Um, so that's it essentially. These documents have been available to the, um, at the town clerk's office, my office, and the libraries. I haven't received any comments and certainly we're, we can open up for any comments if anyone may have, but that's sort of it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Make a motion to close the public hearing at seven forty-two.
Second.
Seven thirty-eight.
Yeah, seven thirty-eight.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Marion Bologna.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yes.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Juanin.
Report is right before this page.
Sorry, Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Always report.
Council Big Leong.
Yes.
And Council Zampano.
Yes.
And next we'll move into Town Manager's Report. Update on Plan of Conservation Development Workshop?
Yeah, I included another, uh, memo from Carrie Duquez indicating that the, uh, online survey is, uh, live and that to date, uh, three hundred or at the time of writing, uh, the memo three hundred is now, uh, close to three twenty. Uh, and, um, they continue with, with the process. The steering committee met, uh, to look at the, um, responses and to prepare for, uh, upcoming workshop. Uh, so the initial, um, thought was to have it the first week of April again. That's going to conflict with, um, budget deliberations. So, uh, Carrie is working, uh, to coordinate with, uh, Malone McBroom on pushing that date out a little bit. But I think the, uh, survey will be helpful and that will probably be open, uh, until the end of March and then, uh, second workshop sometime, uh, in April is the plan at this point.
Thank you. Next is Part-Time Deputy EMD, no salary.
Yeah, I, um, I'm not sure if Jim, yes, uh, Jim Buck is, uh, is here. Wanted just to speak to you just as an FYI of that, uh, he is proposing to bring on, uh, a deputy, uh, EMD and, um, this is an opportunity kind of for Jim to kind of bring us up to speed in terms of, uh, operations. And I, I think it's, I think Jim's done a tremendous job in, in, uh, monitoring and, and, uh, helping us, uh, you know, disseminate information and, and, you know, training and coordinating events. So, uh, he is requesting, uh, no cost, no budgetary impact to bringing on a deputy, uh, EMD.
Hello, members of the council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I come before you budget time or to ask for additional resources or equipment. So I'm happy to do so at this time with, uh, no monetary requirement or request. Um, you know, one of the things we try to do is be as prepared as possible for the, uh, possible events that could, uh, impact the town. And, um, we are short-staffed. It's, uh, my deputy, Anthony Esposito and myself. And as you know, he's a very busy man. So, uh, we, we, uh, have an opportunity here that's rather unique, which is an individual who's, uh, a lifetime of service, uh, to public safety and is, is willing and is very well-qualified to come onboard the team and assist us, uh, both in the planning, uh, helping dot the i's, cross the t's, uh, maybe some new ventures that, uh, that could help the town and, um, and be a member of the emergency management staff. So I, I hope you would join me in, in supporting and, and, uh, welcoming on, uh, Assistant Chief Amatruro, Mark Amatruro as Deputy Emergency Management Director.
Good pick.
So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Or if you have any for Mr. Amatruro.
Sign him up.
Okay. Seeing none, if I could take a moment, um, I, I just want to, uh, you know, hearing some of the, one of the earlier, um, uh, talking points and, uh, Director Pascasello, um, I could tell you that I interface frequently with the, with the East Shore District Health, um, from both a, uh, planning and mitigation phases, and they are great partners to the town. Uh, they provide flu clinics for your service. They work with, uh, vulnerable populations and, uh, they participate in the exercises. And most importantly, after a disaster is struck, they engage in, uh, a very active role in the recovery phase, uh, to include inspections and the, uh, you know, unfortunate tough decisions that require embargoes when there's been sufficient, uh, time and, uh, time lost to, uh, power outages. So, uh, they do a great job and I'm, uh, happy to, uh, show some support for the work that they do. That is all today. Thank you.
Mike, to make that official, do we have to just make a motion on that?
No, actually, uh, it's, uh, unlike, uh, unlike Jim's actual position, that would have to come before you. I would have to appoint and you would confirm, but in this case, no. It would just be the directing of the, um, the director to appoint the deputy.
I just wanted, I wanted to say something. Uh, I've known Mark for fifteen years. Excellent choice.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
I can beat that. I've known Mark for sixty-two years. Sixty-one and change. And you couldn't have picked a better guy.
Mayor, if I could also just, under my report, add, um, that you all have, uh, the budget books are, have been distributed and, uh, no action tonight, but just wanted to get those to you. And, and comment that when we were in the budget process of putting numbers together, one of the items that came up was from the REC Commission and, and talk about the issues they're having with the roof and, and, or leaks in, in the senior center wing, uh, of the, of the building. Uh, it, it has been a problem. It's been, um, you know, something that the, the town and the Board of Ed side spent some money back in September of last year to, to, um, shore up some of the flashing near the, uh, front entrance and, uh, the main entry and, um, trying to, you know, plug up those leaks as well. Um, they haven't succeeded entirely. Um, so I had another conversation with, uh, Bill Chody about this and, you know, there are some, some issues that will need to be addressed. But what his plan is at this point is to look at, um, waiting for Eagle Rivet, which is the same company that we're, we're engaged in, uh, to look at the MBIS roof. Uh, so when they come in the spring, uh, to coordinate with them and plan with them and look at assessing what other repairs could be necessary, uh, but it, you know, for addressing these issues. But before we do that, I've got to get in there with him because it, it could be an issue that some of the, could be the pipes that are in the ceiling themselves could be contributing to some of the, some of the problems. So we want to rule out, you know, any of the, the pipe issues and then get to the roof issues with Eagle Rivet and then see what they say, uh, for, for a short-term fix and patching and repair, if you will, uh, for that roof. Um, because the, the, the long-term fix of doing a new roof would, is in, is in the capital improvement plan. I placed that number in there based on the report that the, uh, company that did TDS gave us some, some numbers. So it's about a million and a half, close to a million and a half if you want to replace with a new roof. But in the meantime, because of the safety. I'm sorry.
I think that was a flat roof.
I think we could put a peat roof on that.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to fix it. We wouldn't want to fix it flat.
Yeah, and, uh, I guess the history on that roof is, is there's two, two layers. It's a double-layered roof. So I guess they just went over the, the one that they had up there. So, um, I don't know if that presents extra problems for Eagle Rivet or whoever goes up there to look at trying to chase these, these problems down. Um, but it, it's going to continue to be patch and repair, kind of, uh, doing the best we can to eliminate the leaks and, and the, and the safety issues of having water infiltration there. Um, so they spent about, I think it was close to six, fifty-five hundred, six thousand, uh, last August to do that. And, uh, this spring we'll get a better idea of what needs to be done. So that, you know, then in the meantime, again, we're going to go through, try to address these issues if it's piping and, and, and look at, look at this as best we can.
Um, I have one other thing under the Town Managers' Report. I noticed in your weekly report that, um, you did interviews for the Poco Fest Coordinator. And I know this has come up in discussion with the Park and Rec Commission. So I was just wondering what that status was.
Well, interestingly, you, you ask, um, nothing, uh, that, there was not a candidate to be selected of that group. Um, so I've started the re-advertising and coordinating with, uh, Lauren to, to go back out in a broader and different approach to some, making sure we've got a few different places to place those ads and a little bit longer time to, to look for someone. It's a tough, it's a tough.
Well, well, I, I mean, it is now, time is of the essence because we're into March.
Yes.
I know, um, Jen has stayed on and has been working and, you know, working on festival stuff. But part of the issue that also came up was, um, we may have to, in, in order to get someone for this position, because it is a rather unique position and you just don't want someone who's looking for a job and says, "Well, I think I can do this" and knows absolutely nothing about the organization and everything else, is, part of it is the payment and the, the salary. Now, the Poco Fest is not, um, a line item in Park and Rec's budget. It's, it's a program run by Park and Rec, so it comes under their jurisdiction. But there is nothing in the budget book. So is there any leeway that they have if they have to make, do something with the wage structure and the wage that they would pay this part-time person because it's taken out of Poco Fest, that they would have the authority to do that without having to wait to come back to a council meeting for our approval? I mean, it's similar, I look at it as it's similar to their part-time seasonal help in the summertime when they're getting camp directors and camp counselors. They're not coming to us for their salaries. They have so much allocated in their budget and they have a range of money in there so that they can pay, um, within a specified range that the commission has approved with the same work for the coordinator, so that they have a little bit more flexibility and can offer something without having to come back to us for approval.
Yeah, I think there's that flexibility. But I, I mean, my, I just think back to the, the process of how we, we got, we got here and I didn't want to skip that oversight from the council till they say, "Okay, this is, you know, this is a, this is a Poco Festival Coordinator position." Part-time as it may be, it's, it's come before the council in the past. Now, going forward, if the council's comfortable with that, yeah, I agree with you. I think that it's in, it's in a, a fund that should have flexibility and I think that's a great way to approach it because it is very, it's what we're finding. It's, it's a very unique hit-or-miss kind of thing. Depending on the timing of the ads and who receives it and who responds, there's not a lot of, of individuals that are, that are, you know, in festival type and, and, or have both a festival background and, and events planning with actual knowledge of this particular festival. So I think, I think we, we would do ourselves a favor by doing.
And I think it needs to be structured because I, I know that there was, you know, a very good candidate. Unfortunately, they're not old enough.
Mm-hmm.
Yet.
Yeah.
But if something, if they could structure it in a way that say, "Okay, this person is an apprentice and we can pay them X number of dollars so that they can learn under the coordinator." And Jen's been working so far this year, like, even if you brought someone on, they're not going to get the pay that was in the authorized because they're not even here, they wouldn't be here for most of the year. So I, I just have, I personally think that the commission with the direction of the Park and Rec Director should have that flexibility. And so I guess I'm kind of throwing it out to the council to see once what your consensus.
Time is of the essence, it seems.
Yeah, they're going to be up against it. Even with, you know, if, if I were to turn around, get it, you know, it's just, I, I know they're going to be faced with it. And I think that what you're laying out has great, uh, flexibility and I think opportunity there is an individual who could step into that role as an apprentice, if you will. And, I think it, you know, I think we should have further discussions on that. But if, if, if the council is, is comfortable with letting it, uh, letting that work be done at the REC Commission and Poco level, I'm okay. I can, I can go with that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm.
So, hold on a second. When, when you say they're, they're not old enough, what, what do you mean?
Exactly that.
So they're not eighteen, they're not twenty-one, which, what is the age?
Eighteen.
Okay, so you're look, if, if I understand you correctly, we're looking for possi, we're possibly looking for, um, or the idea is to have this person work alongside the existing to learn the business, basically?
Right.
The process.
And, and that person has been involved for a number of years and has taken a very active role.
Probably has a lot of knowledge on how to do it.
Exactly.
How long is Jen's, uh, going to be available?
Well, right now she's been helping us out because we don't have anyone.
She's been doing it all.
She's been doing it since they, I mean, she resigned last year after.
I'm, I'm aware of that.
Um, but said she would stay on until we found someone and we put it out there and they did the interviews and, you know, the, the candidates that they had, for the most part, were just, you know, people looking for a job. Well, yeah, I can do this. Had no knowledge, had absolutely no knowledge of it. Um, and you just hate to throw someone in that position like that, that doesn't really have a vested interest.
Why don't you make a motion and I'll second it.
So she's, is she willing to, to?
That, um, Lauren has talked to Jen. Lauren, why don't you come up and just kind of?
Hi, good evening. Jen and I have been very open with each other all along and I have a good rapport with her, which is nice. I mean, I could lose her probably the end of March. Possibly she has something in the works, but she's been honest with me and she won't know till the end of March. If that does not pan out, she's willing to stay on with some stipulations that we did discuss at our Recreation Commission meeting, um, which we'll have to address if that opportunity arises, which would be a great opportunity. I don't wish her ill, but it'd be great to have her. Um, because we had, we did do the interviews. Unfortunately, there was nobody even to possibly consider of age.
So I would like to make a motion, um, to allow. So I would like to make a motion to allow the Park and Rec Commission and the Director of Park and Rec to set the salary for the positions as need, as they see needed for the Poco Fest.
I'll second that.
So if they need to hire an apprentice or they need to get someone, I mean, they know that it's, they have X number of dollars in the fund and it's a self-sustaining program, so they know it has to come out of that fund.
And that would include, oh, you got a second, so, discussion, okay?
Yeah.
So that would include, at some point in the future, that the Park and Rec Commission would have authority to designate a director and it wouldn't have to come back to us.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. Pardon me? It's about twenty-two thousand, I think it was around twenty-two thousand last year. It's a part-time position, so the person in the course of a year cannot exceed a thousand hours.
And we didn't spend the twenty-two last year. She did it in less than.
Well, because part of the issue is, is that Jen, this person, but it could be any person, kind of, is very tech-savvy. So she can get a lot of work done on, you know, through the computer, through emails, through just the way she sets things up because this is her background, and she can get the same amount of work done in lesser time, but she's being penalized for being efficient.
Isn't that the way the town government works?
And so, so they just, they need that leeway because part of it is, and she does have a young family, is that, you know, she may not be able to be in the office in the summertime because her kids are off at school, but if they had an apprentice in there, that could be the point person because they know a lot about the festival and then that person would be in contact with Jen. And it takes the burden off of Lauren and Sean because they've also, the last number of months, have picked up the pieces because they're short-staffed because of some people being out and they've been, you know, doing the cooking and other things, sometimes driving the vans when the van driver doesn't show up. So they're picking up all of those pieces and having Jen or someone like Jen, in however they see fit to have it run, would be beneficial to them and ultimately the town in running the event.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano?
Yes.
Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
Next event, next is community events and presentations. Then we'll move on. Citizen's statements, petitions and correspondence.
I'd like to dovetail on the Potato Fest. There is no job description. It's, you have to be Superman. You have to have nerves of steel. You have to multitask while you're multitasking, in the middle of multitasking while you're multitasking. You have to answer seven phone calls at once, two emails, and possibly just say hi to your husband on the cell phone after twelve hours in the hot sun. Again, I'll reiterate, this is not a cash cow. This is a community event. You can't write a job description for it and Jen has been doing a great job. She gets along with everybody. That in itself is a miracle because I can't say that all the past people we've had worked well under pressure. And you need the continuity because she's working, I mean, as soon as the festival's over, you've got to start next year's festival. You don't have any downtime, so you're not going to find a, I don't know what the word is, a candidate that, you know, is going to, you're going to know in an interview. You're going to have to really depend on your gut. And again, Lauren, I don't think you, have you ever had a full staff since you took the job?
Ugly that.
Lauren has never had the privilege of having a full staff that she manages. So, yeah, she and Michael slash hamburgers at a vet's dinner. And again, the support they give, what little they have, is amazing. So, I mean, again, like I say, you've just got to be willing to promote the Potato Fest, but you've got to promote it with the right person in there. And you can't nickel and dime it to death. It's growing and it's, again, the wine tasting will be coming in this year again. There's good, positive stuff on the table, but with that comes coordination. And coordination with the right person is really hard to find. So by her having the ability either to keep the right person or find a new one, and it's going to be hard because it's not the ability of a person, it's the history of what the person can bring. If they haven't been involved with the Potato Fest, I know Rose is there every year and, you know, and she knows the history and it's a rolling history. We've had the good years, the bad years, and we know what not to do again and what we can do again. So we've molded this monster called the Potato Fest into a success year after year. But it doesn't come out without a lot of hard work, sweat, getting wet on those rainy days. I mean, you just don't know what to do. I mean, we had, we didn't call off the tractor pull on Saturday this year. We had ten tractors show up. Tough decisions have to be made and they affect your performances and what you do, but next year, it'll be, I mean, like in April, we didn't have enough room for everybody to park. So everything is a success, but I believe, you know, it's got to fall on this person here. You've got to give her a little leeway to come up with the right person. But again, she's already well behind the eight ball because it's here. I mean, it's a couple, three months away, but it's right in the buildup of everything. So thank you for working with her.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name's Steve Whalen. I reside at thirty-nine Shitsey Drive and I'm the chairman of the Permanent Project Building Committee. And I want to speak tonight concerning the new Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee that was established at your last meeting in February nineteenth, and there was a report on it given this evening. That building, Police Department, Police Station project was referred to us by you, by the council, at your meeting on December fourth and has had most every building project in the over twenty years since the mid-nineties when the Building Committee was established. Subsequent to that, we had a meeting, two meetings, meeting in January and February. And then subsequent to your February nineteenth meeting, we were all notified by the town manager that you would have formed that advisory committee and that our services were no longer needed. Now, under those circumstances, I was curious to find out how this and why this happened. So I referred to the minutes of your February nineteenth meeting, which were approved tonight without amendment. And the subject was brought up by the town manager. And the first counselor that spoke in regard to it, and I hear I'll quote from the minutes, the first counselor indicated, "He believes that this is necessary." It does not, he is not sure if the Building Committee wants to be responsible for all that is necessary for this project. After that, two other counselors voiced that they were in agreement and then there was an unanimous vote approving it without further discussion. Now, I could see, based on that statement, where council may have thought that somehow the existing Building Committee was going along with this. But I can tell you, there's nothing further from the truth than that. What that statement was, was one man's opinion based on a feeling he had. No basis in fact. And I feel that, you know, to suggest that the Building Committee was not up to handling this project or was too lazy to deal with it is completely out of bounds and many people would consider slanderous. Now, I want to just give you a quick sequence of events that occurred between in December and February. After you referred it to us, our committee was not active at that time because there were no projects going on. So the town council, the town manager, sent out a communication to all the members to make sure we were still interested in serving on the committee and dealing with this project. And everybody indicated that they certainly would proceed with it and go forward. We had a meeting, a first meeting in January, which all the members attended. We had our second meeting in February, in which all but one member attended. And I obviously was at those meetings and at no time did I hear any expression or anything that could be interpreted as a reluctance on our part to deal with this project. Now, I'm told that the town council can basically do, under our town charter and all, that you basically can do anything you feel like doing, and that may be the case.
Well, before you get too far, just let me address a couple of issues that came up. First of all, we don't have a building yet. We don't even have a design yet. We don't even have a conceptual design. So it was probably sent to the Permanent Project Building Committee a little too early. We don't even know where we're putting these buildings on the plot of land. So we went back to the architect and, as you heard tonight, they're picking a design scheme for buildings. And the Police Commission has to decide what type of building is going to fit on what type of plot of land down there, whether it's a single-story, whether it's a two-story building or whatever. So that's why it probably got referred to the Building Committee too early before we had even a building to send to the Permanent Project Building Committee. Once there's a building selected, then it's going to go back to the Permanent Project Building Committee. But in the meantime, these counselors are going to sit up here, you know, when the advisory committee comes back and say, "This is what we feel would be best down there on that plot of land and for this council to approve what fits on that plot of land and how the town center is going to eventually look." And then once there's a building there, you're not going to be in retirement forever, but once the building is designed, then you're going to be referred back to the Permanent Project Building Committee to make sure that building's built to the proper standards. But it got referred to the Permanent Project Building Committee a little too early and shouldn't have been there before we have a design of the center.
Okay, well, that's very helpful and.
We didn't mean to step on anybody's toes or make anybody's feelings hurt, but we don't have a building yet to refer to the Permanent Project Building Committee. We don't even have a design concept yet to refer to the Permanent Project Building Committee. And by your standards, you can't do a town design center, you know, without town council authorization. So that is the reason that it was pulled back. It wasn't pulled back because we didn't feel, "Yeah, I could do it," or you guys didn't want to do it, or you're reluctant to do it. There was nothing, no wording ever came out of my mouth like that or, you know.
Well, because there was discussion among, at other council meetings about when we started looking at the design in various pieces of land is we needed to look at it as a whole. Where were we going to go and what did we want it to look like in twenty, thirty, fifty years? Whatever, you can place whatever number of years you want on the plan because we all know it's not going to happen overnight. But we didn't want to just put the Police Department in one piece of property and then, you know, five years down the road or ten years say, "Oh, we shouldn't have put it there because now we want to do all this other stuff." And that was a discussion we had at various meetings as we need to look at this as a whole project and with the Police Department being most likely the first thing that gets done, whether it stays where it is and it gets redeveloped there or it's a brand-new building. And that's all, that's still up for discussion. But I agree with the mayor's, it was never intended or said that the Building Committee didn't want to do this. We just felt that it was a decision that had to be made by the council as to what that is ultimately what we think that's going to look like for a town center.
And I would add that, just based on our discussions last night, there's an awful lot of decision-making that has to take place and a lot of looking at, for example, members of the committee are going to go out and look at some other police stations. I think that the whole concept, and I think it's a wonderful idea to have a town center, but, right, it's going to take us time to decide before any real decisions are made on a building. And I would totally agree with that.
So I'd like to say, and I'd like to address you, Steve, that I'm the reason, I convinced the council to send it over to you guys early. And I think I talked to you about this.
You did.
I told you that, you know, I felt that you weren't getting things early enough and hence we have the intermediate school. So, you know, you shouldn't, I don't think that you should get something after the contract is signed. But after sitting there for two meetings, I came to the realization, and so I probably misspoke that you guys didn't want to do that or whatever I said. But, you know, I came back here and I said, "I think that, you know, we should form our own committee here because we're going to be making decisions that you guys never had gotten, you never got anything," and correct me if I'm wrong, "before a contract was signed with a builder." So I think we gave it to you, we gave it to you too early.
You know, I think we, early on, Rome Harrison, we hired the architect. We interviewed, hired the architect. You would refer to us for that purpose. We then, we didn't hire him.
No, because I actually voted on hiring the architect on that one.
Yeah, you, no, you.
I think it was the same architect. Wasn't it Silver Petroselli?
No, it was Slam.
Slam, right.
But, no, we've got.
But anyway, like, so picking, you know, even talking about moving a town center up there, we're going to take a lot of heat on that. We all know that. And so, so I think, you know, as time went on and the more I thought about it, I thought, you know, it should be an elected official that has to take the heat on doing something that's this crazy. But, so what this committee's going to do is look at the conceptual future town center, which again is like a fifty-year plan, and come to terms on the design with the police commissioners and on what we want it to look like and, like, you know, aesthetically, not anything to do with the building of it. And then we're going to pass it back to the Building Committee.
Well, I'm glad we had this discussion because it wasn't clear from the only thing I had to review, which was the minutes. And so I'm happy to hear that. And I'll report that to the members of my committee and.
So they have a few more months off because once it starts, we all know what the Building Committee, the work that's entailed in it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Resignations and appointments. Resignation of Barbara Fucci, Account Clerk Two in the Tax Department after nineteen years of service.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. That's coming up for April fifth. I put her letter in there for your view. Yeah, and just publicly want to thank her for her, acknowledge her for her years of service, nineteen years, and very difficult decision for her to retire. But a valuable employee and we're going to miss her.
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight, wow, I'm way off.
So twenty-eight years instead of nineteen?
Yeah, so, it's good, yeah, big shoes to fill and we're going to miss her.
Excellent. All right, next is unfinished business, discussion and action, future budget planning initiative.
I would just like to mention, as we start to look at the budgets, that we keep in mind that five-year plan that was developed and hopefully the departments have submitted what they had in that five-year plan. And I think as a council, you know, we agree that it was a good thing to have and I hope we look carefully at that five-year plan as we look at the various budgets. I mean, we spent a lot of time getting it done and the department has, you know, submitted plans and I just want to keep bringing that up, that we have that plan.
I just want to keep bringing up the concerns that I have with the new governor and all the taxes and.
the taxes, and the less funding that we're going to be looking at. I think we should be very cognizant of that.
Oh, yeah, right.
We take on the teachers' pensions and no funding for the schools.
Which has always been between the state and the teacher, never been between the town and the teacher.
Ultimately, we have to come up with the funding. So I think we should start looking at regionalizing our own town.
All right, next is update...
Before you get off, on that, should we, should we bring in, should we bring Vinnie in before us, like, before we start the budget deliberations, or just figure, you know, get his perspective on what's going on up there, or should we...
Yeah, we could ask him.
For our next meeting. I mean, we have budget workshops in between, but at the next council meeting...
Maybe our state senator.
Yeah, our state senator as well.
Right, I agree.
If Mike can invite him to our next meeting.
For the night, sure.
And they can be on first. It's okay, we'll let them go first.
Right after roll call, they'll be, they'll have the floor. All right, next is update on 944 Totucket Road remediation.
No change. It's really weather-dependent. I would need contact the engineer on that, hopefully...
Well, spring's coming pretty soon, so...
It's going to be here pretty quick, and you'll think they're...
Next, new business in action, discussion in action, motion to approve proposed ordinance 2018-3, amended chapter 201 of the Code of North Town and North Branford, entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
I make the motion to approve proposed ordinance 2018-3 as presented at the March 5th public hearing.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is motion to approve proposed town of North Branford Road standards.
I move to approve the town of North Branford Road standards as presented.
Second? Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is report on 2018 grant list by David Ambrose, town assessor.
We had a pretty decent year this year. Any grant list growth over 1% to me is worth writing home about. The grant list actually increased by 1 to 1/4%, which equates to $15.5 million in terms of assessment dollars. Real estate increase is mostly due to the completion of eight or nine new homes, plus I was able to go in and revalue, no, not revalue, reexamine cert commercial properties based upon permit activity. On the personal property side, I revalued several companies using a alternate valuation technique. We also added previously untaxed property to the grant list. Motor vehicles is always a crapshoot. We never know what we're going to get, but however, ever since I've been here, we had growth every single year since I've been here. I think just as important as grant list growth is keeping the money, and I'm happy to tell you that. We have only six appeals to the BIA, and in my estimation, we're going to give back around $10,000. And that's nothing compared to the half a billion dollars we added to the grant list in terms of tax revenue. We've had grant list growth the last several years, but I want to, I think it's important for me to let you know that most of that growth was due to our office's resourcefulness rather than pure grant list growth. In other words, our tax base is somewhat flat. However, I will try to continue that trend of grant list growth, but I just want to let you know that. There's nothing out there on the horizon that really catches my attention, so the only thing that I can see out there on the horizon that is of value is the project on Falla Road. According to information that I heard, they're constructing a 230-unit apartment complex. And just a, just a quick calculation, if they were to charge $1,000 rent per unit, that would equate to a valuation for the property from land and building of $15 million. That's pretty significant. You have everything in your packet and more that you ever wanted to know about the grant list, so I would love to answer any questions you have at this point in time.
Did you look at that new proposed medical center on 139?
Not yet, I haven't seen any plans yet.
Yeah.
When I do have plans, I can come up with a preliminary value, you know, taxing that.
Dave, you mentioned that there was untaxed property that was added?
There were several accounts that we added to the grant list. The biggest one was a cell tower on parts of this whole road. I thought for years that it was owned by SNAT. They're exempt by state statute. They either, they have the choice to either render their assessed value with us or the state of Connecticut, and they opted to file with the state. So I thought they were exempt on the local level, but it's actually owned by a private citizen, so able to go out and die the property and add that to the grant list.
Is there a number of years you can go back, or...
Three years.
Three years, yeah.
Terrific numbers.
Thank you.
Terrific numbers.
And Dave, what was the new technique you were mentioning for...
For personal property, the traditional way to value property is cost approach. You know, the cost of the equipment, okay, is upon the year acquired, minus depreciation equals value. Let's say, take the cell tower, for example. It probably costs 30 grand to build that, in terms of bricks and mortar. But if you buy that property, you want to know how much value, how much rent that could produce per year. So instead of using the cost approach, we use the income approach. So we, I looked, I went online and looked at the amount of money like AT&T, or SNET, or Verizon pay that individual to use the tower as co-users. So I took that annual rent and capitalized that into value. So these costs, there are three approaches to value, sales, cost, and income. Sales is mostly used for homes, because there's a lot of sales. Cost for personal property, because there's no sales information, and income for office buildings and hospitals, you know, when you have rent per bed, or rent per unit, rent per office space, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is revisions, the animal control agreement with Branford.
Good evening. We've had an agreement with the town of Branford since roughly 2005. It was amended once previously and on proposing a second amendment. Basically, it's on page 120 of your tablet. Right now, our agreement calls for us to pay 30% of the expenses that Branford incurs for the animal control. And what happened last year, when we got the number that was due in 1718 related to 1617 expenses, it was up significantly. And the answer that I was given by my counterpart in Branford is that Laura, the Animal Control Office, runs a very successful animal camp program in the summertime, very successful that requires more staff, thus increasing the expenses. However, because our agreement only calls for the expenses, we don't get to share in that revenue, she charges the kids that go to the animal camp. We don't share in that revenue. So what I'm looking to propose, and this is, this is all subject to Vinnie's, this is just my un-lawyer-type approach to doing it, but changing the words from the actual expenditures to the net operating cost. And that will allow us to capture our share of the revenue she derives, instead of just the expenses. So again, it should serve to make it a more equitable distribution of the cost, instead of Branford just dishing over 30% of the cost to us, we'll be now enjoying some of that revenue, the same percentage of that revenue, to have the true net operating cost. So the motion is back on page 110, just basically to kind of move it to the next step, to, you know, engage Mike, to allow Mike to work with Vinnie and get ahold of Jamie Cosgrove to see if we can start working on that, to get it resolved in time for, before this fiscal year is over. Any questions on the basic content?
Did you get sense they're amenable to having...
I spoke with Jim Finch, who's my counterpart in Branford, and he understands the logic. Again, he's, obviously, he's like me, he's not has any decision-making power, it's up to their board of selectmen and you folks, so it makes sense. Sometimes things that make sense don't happen.
But animal camp should not be part of...
Well, it's part of her expenses, because she hires kids to...
Yeah, but technically, it shouldn't be part of the agreement.
You get, that's another way to look at it, too, exclude that. But the revenue would be nice, because if she charges for people that adopt dogs, that's revenue, too, so they kind of, you've got to be careful how you word it.
But Branford's stretching it by adding those salaries into the budget for an animal camp that is not part of the initial agreement.
Animal control. No, I see what you're saying. It's either we exclude that function, but I think the revenue is nice for us to get a piece of, again, from adoptions and things like that, that she may...
Because there's other revenue streams besides just the camp.
Besides just that. Exactly, exactly. I think that the net operating cost is a more all-encompassing approach.
Well, to further this, just along this, because we need to hereby make a motion, I mean hereby resolve that the North Branford Town Council directs the town manager to begin discussions with the first selectman of Branford regarding amending the animal controlled agreement to reflect a change in the fee formula outlined above and include in the draft amendment revision attached. This is contingent on the town attorney's review and favorable concurrence.
The second discussion. Perhaps we should review the whole thing.
On discussion, would revenue be gifts left to them as well?
I'm not sure exactly how it's showing on their books. I'm not sure, valid point...
I'm sure the gifts have to be listed somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. If it's part of the operating budget of the animal controller, I can talk to Jim and ask him how they're working it over there, but, yeah. So I think it's just a more equitable way for us to share on the bottom line versus just the expense part only.
Anthony, is there any way that we know how much service we're actually getting, you know?
Yeah, you bring up an interesting point. I could swear since 2013, we had discussions, we were going to use as a basis the calls for service, and I can't find anywhere in my notes when we talked about that.
I remember, too.
Yeah.
And it seemed like we, the discussion ended up, most people called the police department
Right.
first, and we were trying to figure out how to track.
Right. We may be only 20% of their workload.
Exactly.
We may be 50% of their workload, so it's hard, it's like we use...
At one time, we were looking at it, and it was like more than an ambulance ride to bring a dog to Branford.
Right.
So...
Right, and, you know, it's, we use, like, for the sewer, we use flow as a percentage to show the actual, for the probate, we use the grant list as a proration, so to be a flat 30% really might not be equitable as well, so maybe I can amend that to have Vinnie look at that as well, to see if there's some basis...
I don't think we're taking 30% of their services.
No, right.
I know we are.
We don't require a monthly, quarterly statement of the activity?
The woman comes in.
We do get a yearly report.
Yeah, I forget the woman's name, there's a new woman that...
Quarterly.
Yeah.
She comes in quarterly to the council.
But still, I don't know, there's a solid way to track, you know, the actual service that we're getting, you know, whether it's 10 dogs a month, or cats, or...
Well, wouldn't we...
The call for services that she would be able to delineate would be, I think, the basis to use.
I don't think that quarterly report has calls for service, though.
No, it just says, I think it just says how much is from our town. I don't know if it's overall.
Yeah.
You could certainly ask, ask, you know, but that's part of the agreement.
Yeah, I think we should, personally, in my opinion. Because the number's risen quite a bit.
All right, roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is assessment deferral application for 665 Totucket Road Carriage Stone Farm LLC.
Yes, you have another applicant, it's in your package. Again, we've done, successfully done three, and this would be the fourth, which outline here for Ken and Carol Newbig, owners of 665 Totucket Road, for the assessment deferral and construction of a new building on the same parcel of land, and it's been reviewed by the assessor, tax collector, town planner, building official myself, meets all the requirements for increasing the property value by a minimum of 35%. We've included in the last page of the packet, a analysis evaluation statement from Dave Ambrose in terms of the percentage increase of 92%, so clearly well beyond the threshold of 35%. So I would recommend that this also be approved, continued upon your approval. That's my recommendation.
So what is this business? I mean, I just, I'm not exactly familiar with this, and where exactly on Totucket Road?
Neither am I, but I know the applicants here could speak to that, but I think it's...
Totucket and Auger, okay.
I'm told it's, it could be corrected to dog agility type of business, is that? Yeah, I don't, I thought, sorry, I thought we had an applicant in...
Okay.
It's, from what I understand, it's on the property and a new barn, if you will, structure for dog agility, it's basically...
Well, the mayor just said it's Auger in Totucket, so now I know where it is. It's by the farm there, by the thing. So I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the assessment deferral application for 665 Totucket Road, map 51, lot 42, property of Ken Newbig and Carol Newbig, as authorized in the resolution passed on June 21st, 2016, and effective October 1st, 2016, and based on the application information submitted to the town of North Branford on February 14th, 2019.
Second?
Could I have discussion?
Yep.
Let's see here, where it says assessment deferral preliminary evaluation statement, and the percentage increase was 92%. How does that get there?
Mike, you want to answer that?
I wish I could. Dave calculated, and, and I'm not sure what the formulas are, how he derived that.
Well, I think he must have, you know, taken a value of the...
He's got evaluation statement in there.
Value of the new building, it's...
Right, and based on the plans that they submitted, he probably...
So that, you know, cost of new building...
It's on 126.
Versus an old depreciating horse barn.
See, hell knew.
Yeah.
He went through that just once ago. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is discussion in action on 824 referral regarding 55 Tommy's Path.
Yeah, so I put together a memo based on a request, unsolicited request from Ron Ciana for the purposes of purchasing the property, 55 Tommy's Road. We ran into some issues with the North Branford Land Conservation Trust in moving that piece. As you recall, we've done an 824 referral before in the hopes of working with them, but they were inquiring and looking for a survey of the property, and that would obviously be an additional cost to us, the town, and wanted a warranty deed for the property. and wanted a warranty deed for the property, which through the council's office, we couldn't do because of the complexity of the, of the property and the history. So at this point, the first, if the council wants to even entertain this, the first course of business would have to, again, refer this to P and Z, to see, in their minds, if this would even be feasible with respect to the applicant's desire to acquire this property in order to help develop his abutting property. So, it's very, very complicated, but this is, would have to be the first step if the council is indeed interested in seeing if it's possible.
So, so I know we have to send it for an eight twenty-four, if that's what we decide to do, but then, after, so if it comes back favorable from planning and zoning, yes, we can sell it. We can't, can we just say, okay, we'll just sell it to that person, or do we have to do a request for proposal?
No, that, that's what George addressed last time.
Yeah. I think we have to put it out for.
Well, that's what I thought, too, because we had to on that other parcel on Forest Road.
Whatever happened to that parcel on Forest Road?
They didn't meet the minimum they required, so we, yeah.
Does he like just quit down there?
So would we still have to, do we have to follow those same guidelines? Those, that same procedure?
Short answer is, for purposes of selling, regardless of whether or not you have the rule, it's always best practice to put it out for public bidding, so that no one can ever claim that they were not afforded the opportunity to purchase the property. What happens on parcels like this one, which is landlocked, is what towns find, is that it's routinely, routinely the process that it's only the adjoiningers who have, express any interest in the subject parcel. So you should go out, because it's best practice to go out, to offer it to the general public, but you shouldn't expect an overwhelming interest in the property. If there's any interest in the property, it's going to be the subject individual plus potential other adjoiningers who may be aware of what that individual wants to do, and will exercise, you know. But, so with respect to this, there, there's no, there is a very choppy path forward for this individual who's looking to subdivide their property, and because of the location of their property, fronting a paper road, a road, a road that has not yet been accepted by, by the town, but is there on subdivision. So even if you were to go through this process, and even if this individual were to acquire this property, which is now town property, it would simply become private property, and there's no guarantee it's gonna have the net effect of what the, it's going to increase his chances by a half step, but he still has about a hundred steps to go. So, and may, and may ultimately be unnecessary, depending upon what the other regulatory boards determine.
I, I think it's a good idea to get, instead of spending money, to.
Right.
Give it to the land trust, you know. It, it, it's a landlocked piece now, and so we'd get some money and get it back on the tax roll. Isn't it like mostly four acres of, or mostly wetland?
Yeah, five acres, I believe it's five acres, and it's mostly wet, except for maybe an acre.
You know, I don't disagree at all, but we still have to go through the, the same steps, and.
I agree.
You know.
And not just accept an offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we, and as we found out before.
Put it out for bid with a set price on it, or no set price?
Well, a minute, well, the other one, we did a minimum.
Yeah, which was way above.
Well, it wasn't way above.
Well, I believe there's a value here of about eighteen thousand dollars, so.
Well, that's your offer.
There's a value, it says of seventy-five thousand.
Well, it's an interior lot.
See, now with that last subdivision, you can't get to this, right?
Right, so if, generally what I advise is, you have an offer. Obviously, that's someone who is a ready, able, and willing buyer, and so there are two, a number of different ways of assessing value. One is an appraisal, then we can get an appraisal, and then base your decision off of the appraisal. Second is, what is the market going to bear? What is a ready, able, and willing buyer able, willing to pay? That's what you have standing before you, and according to this private market gentleman, he's saying eighteen thousand dollars. So you have to decide whether or not you want to go with that as an opening bid and see where you go, or whether or not you want to go with an appraisal. If you're asking me for my recommendation, I would always say, because you're dealing with the public's property, I would always go off of an appraisal.
If we're gonna establish that, then we should open the Forest Road property back up for, for the requested bid price.
I agree. Right, yeah.
Which was, which was a bid that was submitted. So I mean, if we're gonna do both properties, we might as well make them both fair.
That's, I agree.
That's plus this money, you know, ahead of the appraisal.
Well, can I ask a question? Dave has two statements here. Can you just explain what the two statements, what you mean by the two statements, because they're totally opposite?
Yeah, I, yeah. The higher value is a value in use. It's a value based upon the need of the adjacent buyer to the property. The buyer, the property is worth more than him than anyone else, because he buys the property, it enables him to subdivide the property. So that's a value in use, it has value to him, him own.
I'd only want to put a footnote on there, that as, it increases his chances of subdivision, it does not allow for the subdivision because he, under our subdivision regulations, the hurdles that have to, there are a number of hurdles that have to get through, including if the gentleman was successful to subdivide, he'd have to more interior lots. Under, but there's already another interior lot back there. So therefore, under our subdivision regulations, even with this property, there would be one interior lot too many for approval as this subdivision would present. So again, I don't want the impression to be that if this person gets this property, that he therefore gets to subdivide, because one and one does not equal two.
Right, I guess my, my point was, at first statement, it's, it's worthless.
Well, if you take it, if you take it for property, well, it's worth, it's worth it.
Right, right.
You can't take a property, you can't access to it.
But, but, but it's, so it's not necessarily worth the increased value to anyone else.
It's a value in use to the proposed.
Right, right.
And that val, value would only be there if it somehow was part of an approved, approved building lot.
I agree.
Right.
But therefore, that translates to being potentially of similar value to any other buyer, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Value in use is a legitimate way to divest property, because I know it sounds kind of out of the gray area there, but it's a legitimate principle of the type.
Could I just interject? Ron, Ron, you got anything? Just identify yourself.
Oh, Ronald Sciana, fifty-eight David Lane. A couple of things. I put an offer in to buy the fifty-five Tommy's Path. Now, you're farther down the line about subdividing and other stuff, you know, that may or may not happen. My offer was fifty-five Tommy's Path, close quote. Now, that being the case, also, the property was offered to the trust, land trust. It never went out to bid. So precedent has been set, that you'll accept an offer without going out to bid, because, you know, you offered it to the land trust, you didn't offer it to me.
The land trust is part of the town, though.
It's just trans, just transferring town property, and we've done that before.
Without putting it out to bid.
Without putting it out to bid.
It doesn't.
It's not.
Okay, aside from that, according to the town maps, fifty-five Tommy's Path is ninety-nine percent wetlands, and it is landlocked. So, that's what it is. And you've got a good offer on the table.
We're not fight, we're not fighting, Ron.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just.
We're just, people are discussing, and people are throwing out ideas, but, you know, basically, we know we have it here, we have a bid, and we're just trying to decipher how we, how we go move with it. If we take it, if we take the bid, you know, as, as a base bid and throw it out to the public, you know, as we have to, and you come in with your bid and you want it, that's, then it's probably yours.
Okay, so when it goes out to bid, you know, my offer's off the table when I bid, correct?
What do you mean?
If the value of the property is less than I'm offering, then I can come in at a lower price.
Oh, yeah, yeah, when it goes out to bid, you can, yes, yes.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Unless we set a minimum bid.
Correct, it, yeah, depends on.
But that's all stuff we're gonna talk about after we get the referral back.
Right, so I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby refers the property located at fifty-five Tommy's Path to the Planning and Zoning Commission for possible sale to a private owner as part of the section eight twenty-four referral process.
Second.
Yeah, I would think on further, further items that come through like this, I would recommend color coding the, the map, so it's easier to look at.
Agreed.
Maybe we could do that when it comes back to us.
Yeah, you know, just highlight, all you can do is highlight that block, that way it makes it easier for us to discuss it.
Good idea.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mike, if we're gonna do that, you're gonna do, look into that Forest Road property?
Sure, I figure we wait till, see what happens with the referral from P and Z to come, would come back, and then we could probably be tied the two together to, to wrap the process for RFP together.
The Forest Road property didn't come to us the same way.
Well, it did, it came, it came on an offer.
Yeah, wasn't there a minimum, though, on that one?
And we were just, we were looking, we were just hooping taxes, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, it was just, it was from the tax office.
It was from the tax office.
We didn't pull the number out of the air, we got the information from Dave Ambrose.
Yeah, so we, we were, we were looking for, for the ta, the value of the taxes, though.
Right.
That's where the, the value was set, no?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, those are unclaimed, those are still unclaimed, you'll never get those.
Well, apparently, we didn't get.
Get an offer.
Yeah.
All right, next item is reviewing approval of bid specification number one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, professional cleaning services.
Yeah, you have a bid pack, bids, I'm sorry, the specifications are there in your packet for professional cleaning services, and we've, I think, done this in the past, this comes up, or at least I think it's been before you in the past for services, town hall, police department, public works, and I believe the ambulance, other buildings involved in, in that, and the, and the services we've had for, for quite a while, that's the way we do it, versus having a, you know, professional, like, library has their own, rec has their own, so this is the group.
I just have some questions in reading through this. So when you say quarterly or semi-annually, they have to refinish the floors? What are you talking about? I mean, to me.
They, they strip the wax and re-wax them.
So it's.
They start to brown out.
Well, no, so I, I mean, it's just, I, I guess, I mean, whether there's hardwood carpet, or, I don't know, tile, or linoleum, whatever they are that they're cleaning, it, it just, I guess the wording of it just seemed a little odd, that they're refinishing, because to me, refinishing floors is, you know, like on hardwood, you strip it all down and you just redo it, and I can't believe that they would do it.
Should put vinyl or linoleum.
Would do it quarterly, that they're gonna do that. And then, they're also, what kind of filters do they have to change? What filters are they, the cleaning company changing? I, I thought our guys did that. Well, anyone, I, I, it just says change filters as needed, what kind of filters are they changing?
As far as the floors, they, they, there is a process on that type of floor, that you actually strip it and re, re, reapply the wax versus, versus on a, on a weekly basis, buff it out, there, there are two different processes.
Change filters, um, well, let me see, I'm, I'm on police department, it's page eleven, but I think it's on almost every. Town hall, it says clean all vents, and underneath, change filters as needed. Well.
They don't clean the vents, but we change the filters. That's air conditioning all out.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought they were referring to, but I didn't know if there were other filters.
Michelle may have to go through and just clean this up a little bit.
Yeah, we can strike, yeah, we can strike that, but like Tom said, I, I'm no expert on floors, but, but it's carpet.
I mean, I, I know at the schools, they, they strip them in the summertime and re-wax and the whole thing, you know, as refinishing.
I can speak to her about both those, and obviously, striking filters, if there's no, no filters, and, and the language, if it's the accurate language for the floors that we want.
Yeah, and, and just.
Why do we not include the libraries and park and rec in this kind of a?
They, they have their own custodians that, that do that, that work for them.
That work for them, okay.
I just have one question, maybe I'm missing it. Is there any type of background check done? I mean, these people are having access to the police department, town hall, everything.
I think they have to be bonded employees.
But I don't see any language in there for background checks, or. I'm sort of missing. I think that would kind of be important to do.
Yeah, there is the fidelity gone for the covering all employees, but I'm not sure we spell out the process for background checks. I think it's typically through a company, and it's on the company to do that. I don't have any, I don't see it.
But I think it would be our best interest to know or have background checked done. Because I know when we do the schools, there's.
See, like, you know, the department, it says. Refinish floors quarterly, I, I can't believe that they're doing. I, I, well, I know.
I, I would think that that terminology is wrong.
Huh?
Don't you think that that terminology is wrong, when you refinish the floor?
Well, that's, that's my point, is what are we at, are, I, I, it's hard to believe that this, that we're getting all of this stuff outlined. And that's why, that's why I asked about changing the filters, because I can't imagine a cleaning company, are we providing them the filters?
Because here's the thing, like, refinishing a floor, so I'll give you a very quick rendition of refinishing a floor. Our North Branford High School gym floor has been refinished once, and I paid for it, my family paid for it. And that was completely sanded down and redone. Now, every so often, they go in there and scratch the top up and throw a new coat of finish on, but that's not refinishing.
Right.
Okay, so I don't think we should be using the term that they're gonna, I mean, if we can get someone to refinish the floor quarterly, we're gonna have nothing left. So.
But we don't have to worry about wood floors in any of those buildings.
Right.
Well, this is, this is us creating this.
Is it the right terminology, Anthony, for its refinishing? Stripping wax.
Stripping wax, if that makes anybody happy. That's what they do.
Yeah.
Stripping wax, like the schools.
Yeah, the schools do it once a year, I'm just, do, do, do they really do it quarterly?
Yes.
So, when this is, this is, we create this. So when this is, this is, we create this for propos- proposal, right?
Right.
So when they go out and they're gonna, they're gonna commit that they're gonna do this. All it is.
Mm-hmm, and give us a price.
And then it's up to your department heads to make sure it's done.
Right.
So on this one, before we vote on, can we just clean up some language in here? And have it come back to us at the next meeting? I mean, I don't know how quickly you have to get these out and.
Have, have we ever invited a cleaning company to walk through, say, this building? And give us the proposal?
No.
Well, I'm asking, have we ever done that, done it that way? And then compared to what we want done versus what they're gonna.
As part of these bids, there's a site visit, right?
Yeah, but what Tom's asking, we get, I guess, unsolicited, if you will, for other, and it's happened in the past where others have come in to, you know, to pitch us on their cleaning services or get the contract sort of thing.
It'd just be interesting to compare what they say they'll, what one would say they would do versus what we're asking them to do.
A lot of the recommendations when they're going through, they say for the bid, you say, do you really want these done quarterly? I mean, you know, I have to do them quarterly, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah.
I haven't walked them, but usually that's what happens.
Yeah, but, so if, if one contractor is asking and says, do you really want it quarterly? So they don't bid on it quarterly, but someone else does, now, now we're not, we don't have apples to apples. Unless you tell.
I'm not saying they make the change, all I'm saying is they may walk through and say, you really don't have to do these quarterly, you can do them twice a year. So maybe we change the bid.
Oh, okay.
You know, or do something, you know.
Usually.
Maybe it doesn't, maybe it was a typo or something, or, oh, we don't really want it done four times a year, we want it twice a year.
Usually what happens is a new company will come out and they'll have the bid specifications, and they'll ask to walk through the buildings. This has happened in the police department. They'll walk through the buildings with their list, see what floors they have to refinish, you know, quarterly, what carpets have to be cleaned semi-annually or whatever, and then they go from there. But they walk through the building.
Before they submit their bid.
Yes, before they submit the bid. So they have an idea of what they're agreeing to.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I've been on numerous, you know, walkthroughs, so I, I know that that's what they do and that's how it goes.
So item nineteen, proper conduct of vendor employees. I would, my opinion, we should have background checked. I mean, they're going into very sensitive areas, PV, town hall, everywhere. I mean, I see that we're asking them not to smoke on town property. I don't know who forces that, or no weapons.
Probably won't get any bidders if we ask for that.
But I know on like school projects, they do background checks. I mean, they're gonna have keys to the buildings, the offices.
But they were the bonded company, so that, that company should have had all those checks done. So, um, I'm sure Michelle could check on that, but I don't know if it's a requirement that we should make, because.
It's an expense.
Yeah.
That would be very substantial, it's an expense. Whether we hired out or whether we asked our police department to do it, which is probably beyond their, uh, uh, their capacity, given the number of employees that would be involved in this.
What you could do is put it as a question.
And then at night, how do you check? I'm sure they were.
Who's there?
Yeah, who's here? I mean, you could see, you know, a lot of the time we're here in two or three years, the night employees have changed probably two or three times, four times. So, and we don't know. But as long as the company's bonded, if anything disappears and it's on camera, guess what?
Well, I mean, just information.
They could lose that, they could lose that contract. So who's them to make sure that they're legit? Do you have any problems?
I, I think it should come back to us at the next meeting, just to clean up some of the language, the terminology and the, the, the language on that one.
Okay, next is review of bid specification for bid number two, two thousand nineteen, twenty, radio equipment maintenance.
Bid number two is the one that there was one change, um, on the last page, highlighted in yellow, versus what you got in the packet, so please refer to, to the one that's in the folder that's highlighted, fourteen. I think that was something that the chief steward had, had requested, that Michelle make that amendment.
So obviously, and since this was amended, so the acting police chief, fire chief, everyone looked at this bid before it came to us.
Yeah, I think primarily, I think it was the, the fire chief, uh, his work on this and sharing would be important, I believe, of, of, of the police chief, but the fire chief, I think, took the lead in developing the specs.
Is there, is there an expectation that when they, materials are, when the equipment is upgraded, that it would be the same company that would probably bid on that as well, or is it, is it gonna be a, is that gonna be confusing? I mean, when is this upgrade gonna happen?
Well, I don't know the specific timeline, but I would think that they would be looking to.
I mean, does it, I would think there might be some confusion there.
Well, it's, my guess is, is it in phases? Because we just approved something for phase one on, on some kind of upgrade at the last meeting. And it, wasn't that? That the upgrade that we approved at our last council meeting?
Yes.
That had something to do with.
That, that's, that's just a minor upgrade to the, um.
What the cert, the.
That allowed tactical to remotely address issues with the console and O C P S power through the internet.
Ah, okay.
That wasn't, I think that was an upgrade, I think that was just allowing them access, remote access.
Well, it is an upgrade because it was about seventy-five hundred dollars or something.
But this is a one-year contract?
Yes.
Yes.
From what I could see, yeah.
That's probably okay. Given that the upgrades that Marie's talking about won't occur within that one-year period in all likelihood.
I just, I just wondered if there would be a confusion with, you had two different companies.
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid specs for bid number two nine, two thousand nineteen, twenty, radio equipment maintenance. Second.
Discussion?
That's an as revised?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay, next is review and approval of bid specification for bid number three, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, general trade services.
So I'm gonna make a motion to either, either table this or just eliminate it. We already did this once and it was.
I'm stacking it for discussion.
All right. Somebody, somebody like wanted out of like Ansonia and was charging us by the, these are carpenters, electricians, and plumbers. We got a million of them in town. Any, hanging a door, everything would be less than the bid requirement anyway. And, and we did it once, am I wrong, friend? And, and they charged us like door to door, so they're.
Well, I, I should have had this taken out, I, I would never use it anyway.
I was wondering why it was in there.
We did it, we got people from way out of.
Ansonia or something.
Ansonia, one was way up in whatever for electrician ridiculous. We did it.
You're gonna get three quotes anyways, you know? Over a certain amount of money, you're gonna get three quotes anyways.
Yeah, I was wondering why it was in there.
So do we have to?
No, we just strike.
No, just skip over, no action and, and.
Got it.
Got it.
All right, next is review of bid specification number four, two, for, bid specifications for bid number four, two thousand nineteen to twenty, propane.
So this is just, this is just for the buildings that have propane in it, I think, the two buildings, I think it was?
That's correct.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the bid specs for bid number four, two thousand nineteen, twenty propane. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
All right, next is review and approval of RFP one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, emergency medical service ambulance billing.
Is this an annual or every three years? I thought, what is it?
Three years.
Three, that's what I thought, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP number one, two thousand nineteen, twenty, emergency medical service ambulance billing. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
The next item is citizen statements and petitions. Seeing them, motion to adjourn?
I'd like to ask, just ask a question.
We gotta, go ahead. Question from the gate.
In regard, in regards to animal control, Anthony, can, can you be sure to ask and see if they, is part of the agreement that they do supply us a list of calls? So that, I didn't want to lose that, because I think that's an important piece for us.
Calls for service.
Yeah.
Quarterly or.
Whatever the kind of frequency is.
It's based on a year and a year, so, you know, the calls for service, let's say, seventeen, eighteen would be our bill in eighteen, nineteen.
Right. It'd be good to have that as a, as a, right, okay, thank you.
Second.
Who made the motion to adjourn?
I don't know, I think Al did, I seconded it.
Okay, Al did, and, and. Anthony seconded.